This could be interesting.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have 6:30 because there's a big alarm. About to end, a moment of silence before we begin. My men, the commission is you saying the agenda for the public forum. We had a motion to adopt that agenda.
I've moved.
That's a motion to change. The second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Tom Whitmer. All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I must carry. The floor is open, Tom.
We want Tom.
Does anybody want to talk tonight? Kerrigan, you want to talk to us tonight?
Tell us news from the big city.
Y'all had a good time with the Apple Blossom motel, didn't you?
Yeah, I was actually off that day, so I'm going to try to cover that. I think when I walked out, I was pretty glad.
You missed the big news today, though.
I guess that's the most... We're not taking minutes on this, are we?
I can't.
I think that's the most tragic event we've had in Black Mountain in years. It's the coach got T-bone down through Spence Street on tree road. Doesn't anybody know who he is or anything like her?
Last I heard, he's actually doing... He's doing his best as he can. Haven't heard too much aside from he has recovered as much as possible.
We still work on colleges, correct?
Really?
He's still the coach up there.
Yeah, I've s-
He's what?
He's still the coach of whatever.
That's right. An assistant coach.
Yes.
He's on the rolls.
Mm-hmm.
I once... It's nice. Nowhere else but Montauk. Nobody gonna jump up and talk. We're gonna adjourn and just...
Lynn, do you have anything to say besides what you're gonna talk about later?
Nope. Just happy to be here.
Didn't call on Hugh.
Excuse me?
Didn't call on Hugh to speak. Oh, yeah.
Hugh is comfortable. Hugh is dragging rear back and got his hands on his lap. I keep watching those eyes close to you. Okay. I'll lift that a motion to adjourn until seven. And a motion. Any? Second?
Second.
Change. All those who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those. All right, Kerrigan.
Now you have to say something.
Off the record, of course. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Safe to gather the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Stand where we are just a moment, silent before we begin the meeting.
Commissioners, you've seen the agenda, and I understand we want to have an addition to the agenda, Tom, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we amend the agenda to add new business item number, letter H, to add a nomination for the vacant alternate planning and zoning commission seat.
Commissioners, Commissioner Whitmer has made a motion to amend the agenda to add item H, which is the nomination of a person to fill a vacancy on as an alternate on the board of the...
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning board, tongue can't get out of the way of my teeth.
Is it I?
Do I have a motion? You made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has been adjen- the agenda has been amended, now adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Sooner.
Have a motion for multiple people. Angie, I'll let you decide. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Jane. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes carry. I don't really have any communication other than to say what a beautiful day it has been in Montreat, and we're enjoying this fine weather, had a little rain last night, and that's a big plus for us because we do need that. I just want to caution everyone to be safe with fires outside and this time of year until we get a little bit more rain than we've gotten right now. So fire wise, keep everything away from your, your debris away from your house, and so forth, and if you need help, call the fire wise folks. Okay? Savannah, you want to cover the consent agenda and then your communication?
Yes, sir, we have a very exciting consent agenda tonight. We have the minutes of the September fourteenth public forum, and the minutes of the September fourteenth town council meeting, and that's your consent agenda.
That was exciting.
Do you have other items to communicate tonight?
Not right now.
All right, Commissioners, you have received reports from the administration, the planning and zoning, police, public works and water sanitation, streets, finance, and adopt additional planning and zoning information. Any questions or comments on any of those reports? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Whoa, okay, you got to move quick, Tom.
As, as usual, I'm going to ask my age-old question to Rachel. Are, are we in good shape on the audit by the end of this month?
Yes, yeah, still some of it. She actually, um, I gave email today, they just needed one more piece, and they were working on putting everything together.
That's great. Thank you for your hard work on that.
Anyone else? Any other questions? All right, floor is open for public comment, any public comment. Seeing no one jump up, we'll move on. No old business tonight, under new business nomination and appointment of a, of Town Commissioner Savannah and me. You want me to cover it?
Take it away.
Okay, backing out on me. We have a, we have Kent Otto's position to cover, to fill. Do we have a motion to replace Kent Otto?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to nominate Grant Dashar to fill the recently vacated town commissioner seat. Grant lives on Virginia Road, he and his wife and two little children live there with their cat. Three, three kids, I'm sorry, three children.
And a mother-in-law.
And a mother-in-law and a dog. They've got the entire package. So, uh, we've met with Grant and were impressed by his willingness to serve and his interest in, in serving the community, so that's why I'm putting forth his name.
I have nomination from Commissioner Fouchet, who have a second.
A second?
Have a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, motion's been made for Grant Dashar to be the commissioner to replace Kent Otto. Uh, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes carry, and Grant, you're the next commissioner, if you'll come up, we'll get you sworn in.
I, Grant Dashar, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are, which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of North Carolina, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, and that, and that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office, office of commissioner of the town of Montreat according to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. Effective this twelfth date of October twenty twenty-three.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Say, while before I let Grant get away, I'm gonna let Grant, what Kitty hadn't told you, I'll let Grant tell you a little bit about himself.
All right, um, so when Kent asked me to, you know, consider, you know, doing this and, and kind of throwing my name in the, in the ring, I initially thought, man, there is no way I have time to do, to do something like that with three kids, and then I run a business, a dental office, which I own with partner, super active in my church, go to, go to Swananoa Christian Church in Swananoa. And, uh, but it, you know, I just spent a lot of time thinking about it and praying about it, and ultimately, um, we love this community, and I want to be able to serve, and that, that really is what it, what it is. It was that and the paycheck, that was the other, the other part. But no, we, we want, I want to be able to serve this community. Um, we've been here only three years, but I have fallen in love with Montreat, North Carolina. Uh, we moved here really for a few reasons. Um, my family was all down in Louisiana, and they had tried to get us to move down there for years. They lived next to a paper mill, I said, I'm not moving to Louisiana, it's not happening. Um, but we were in Memphis, and Memphis is a, is a hard city to live in for, you know, for a few reasons, but it's just a hard city to raise, raise kids in, honestly. Um, we were hearing gunshots, I mean, almost every night. And, uh, if I hear a gunshot here, I'm like, well, somebody's shooting at like a squirrel or bear or something, you know, it's not, they're not shooting at a person, and, um, when we moved here, it was just like, I felt totally safe leaving my kids to run free. Now, if you see them doing something bad, let me know, and we'll deal with it. But I love that, that I live in a place where, um, where it's a community where people know each other, and, and you feel, it's just, it's just a good place to raise kids, or if your grandkids come into town, you, you feel good about that. Um, it's also beautiful, and, uh, and that, that's nice too, but we love it, uh, we're here for the long haul. I, you know, I mentioned that I, I own a business in Asheville, um, I drive into work every day, and, and I love, love driving back here, and, and so we're, we're committed to this area, and just committed to seeing it, you know, continue to be an amazing place. So, yeah, thank y'all for allowing me to do this.
Gary, did you get a good?
Yes.
He'll be right like a dog.
Thank you.
Don't let him try to sit down back there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Can you get in there without bumping your head?
Don't stand up suddenly.
You and Ken, we put all the calls to the side.
Great, thank you for joining us.
Appreciate so much your willingness to serve the community, and we're looking forward to, to a long time being up here with us. Personnel update on the policies. Savannah, you gonna do that one?
I'll do that one.
Okay.
So, this is something I've been working on for the last couple of weeks, um, Rachel was a big help as well. Um, just going through the policy, it hasn't been updated since twenty thirteen, I think, so it's overdue. Uh, we needed some work on a couple of sections. The major changes you'll see are the Americans with Disability Act compliance language in the policy, Family Medical Leave Act language. Um, we kind of beefed up the conflict of interest policy, added in some, um, language about harassment and workplace violence, and then also really expanded our substance abuse policy. So those are the major changes. I know, um, if this is something that you all would like to, to discuss, have some time to think about and to read, um, we can wait until November, it's up, you know, obviously it's up to you, so I'll leave it with you.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Uh, for myself, she has done an incredible job. It's sixty-something pages long, uh, and she's waded through it and made some very substantive changes and updates. Uh, so much so that, um, I would like to have a little bit more time to read it and, and give it the same time that she's given it, uh, so that we could thoroughly absorb it and in turn, give it a good vote in November. That's what my recommendation would be.
Okay, any other comments from any of the Commissioners?
No, I appreciate the red letter addition because the first one, I didn't know what had been changed, so thank you. I also appreciate the, the red letters and, uh, as you put them in there. There are a few little things as I go back and look that I, I would like to discuss with you before I think I want to go on.
Tom, you want to put that in the motion that we table it until, uh, November? All right, Tom's made a motion by saying okay, that we postpone it till November. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Fouchet. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's peruse it, and we'll bring it back up in, in November. And if Mason gets back from bicycling all over Europe, wherever he is, uh, hopefully he'll read it before we have the next meeting. Consideration of a resolution number twenty-three dash ten dash zero zero one, adoption of the personnel policy updates, that will be tabled also. Consideration of proclamation number twenty-three, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Angie?
I received an email from Katrine Doyle. She's the outreach coordinator for HelpMate. HelpMate is a nonprofit that provides domestic violence advocacy to all residents of Buncombe County. She works within our communities to eliminate abuse and fear by providing safety, shelter, and support for victims and survivors of intimate partner domestic violence. They offer free confidential and trauma-informed services including case management, child and family advocacy, community education, court advocacy, educational support groups, emergency shelter, counseling and training. And she asked me to put this before you, as well as all the other towns in Buncombe County, for Domestic Violence Month.
Commissioners, you've heard the, uh, the proclamation read by Angie. Do I have a motion to adopt it?
I, I move that Angie read it and then we adopt it.
You did?
Yes.
Can you find it?
Okay. Whereas, domestic violence is a serious crime that violates an individual's security and humanity due to the systematic use of emotional, psychological, physical, sexual, and economic control. Whereas, an average of twenty-four people per minute experience rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States, more than twelve million people over the course of a single year. Whereas, the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any specific group of people. It can happen to anyone regardless of racial or ethnic identity, sexual orientation, education level, socioeconomic status, gender identity, or religious beliefs, and these problems are sustained by societal indifference. Whereas, intersection layers of vulnerability due to race, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, ability, religion, spirituality, citizenship status, and spoken language in the context of American society make it easier for abusers to isolate, control, create, and sustain power over survivors with marginalized identities. Whereas, children who grow up witnessing domestic violence in their homes are deeply impacted and are more likely to have trouble in school, more likely to perpetuate and be victimized by violence themselves, and more likely to experience long-term mental and physical health challenges. Whereas, survivors should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and abusers shall be held accountable for their violent behavior. Whereas, powerful partnerships exist locally between many nonprofit and governmental organizations that are committed to supporting survivors and their journey towards safety and healing. Whereas, it is survivors of abuse who have been at the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Whereas, Domestic Violence Awareness Month is an opportunity to stand with survivors, to celebrate the progress we have made in combating these crimes, and to recommit to preventing domestic violence in our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on behalf of all of the members of Montreat Town Council and residents of the town of Montreat, that the month of October two thousand twenty-three be proclaimed Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we urge our residents to make the commitment to stop domestic violence by speaking out against it and learning more about the resources available to survivors and their families.
Commissioners, we've heard the resolution and, uh, the proclamation, excuse me, and we already have a motion from Commissioner Alexander. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Fouchet. Discussion and our questions? All those in favor, the proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, consideration of resolution twenty-three ten, disposal of surplus property, Angie and our Berry.
So Berry and actually Dave, Dave has a vehicle that he is going to put up for sale, the two thousand ten Ford Escape, um, the two thousand seven Vermeer wood chipper, which is the old chipper that we just replaced, and miscellaneous small engine equipment. We're going to put it up for sale after ten days. We're going to put it on gov deals and see if we can make some money for the town.
Okay, do I have a motion and our questions about this?
I move to adopt.
Thank you.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I second, I, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So do you put a price tag on it, or is it an auction, or?
It's an, it's an online auction, it's pretty neat, actually, anybody can go look at it. I might get Berry to help me figure out, and Dave, figure out what, what to set the amount for, and then people bid on it.
So you put a minimum in?
Put a minimum in, and they, they bid, and a lot of, um, the things I've sold... And a lot of, the things I've sold in the past, we have like repeat, like there's one guy that always wants to buy police cars, and he's bought a couple of our police cars and, um, a guy in Swananoa has bought a lot of Barry's equipment. So, sometimes we have repeat buyers, but it's a pretty neat process. I like to watch it and see how high it gets and, and the money goes back into the general fund.
Right. Thanks.
Have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion and our questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, carry. Item G, Montreat Memorial Gardens, Kayla DiChristina and then Lynn Gilliland.
Hey, everybody. Can I get that PowerPoint up, Josh, please? All right. My name's Kayla DiChristina and I'm the zoning administrator for the town of Montreat. Before you tonight is a request to install a new path and upgrade the current path at the memorial garden that's just within the town gate. Next slide, please. All right, so the request was submitted by Lynn Gilliland with the Montreat Memorial Garden Committee within the MRA. The committee seeks approval from the Board of Commissioners to, like I said, upgrade and expand the existing path, and the intent is to make the path handicap accessible. Next slide, please. All right, this is the approximate location of where the work would be conducted. It's just to the west of Assembly Drive, within the area of the existing path and then a little bit north from there. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a snippet of the site plan and I've highlighted some of the important features. Lynn also brought a blown-up version too, and there should be a full version of the site plan in your packets. So, as I stated, the area of the proposed work will be conducted where the path is existing, just to the west of Assembly Drive. All of that's within the hatched green area, which is why the board's approval for this was needed. The blue, the light blue color identifies the area of the existing path. They're going to add new stone to it and make it three feet wide. The green area is where the new path will be. That will also be three feet wide with a stone path. The dashed lines, the blue dash line is the floodway of Flat Creek and the orange dash line is the hundred-year floodplain. None of the work is within the flood, floodway of Flat Creek, and they'll have to obtain all their floodplain permits and everything like that. There are also additional improvements proposed. There's several monument stands and benches, but those aren't subject to the zoning ordinance. So, Lynn is here if you guys have additional questions about what's proposed. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, wait, don't go on yet. The, the one thing that I wanted to talk about, other than the actual plan itself, is we couldn't find a record of a maintenance agreement. Right now, the MRA maintains the memorial garden and these, these pathways, but we couldn't find anything in writing and I don't know if, yeah, so I guess, and the MRA intends to continue maintaining it along with these new features. So, I'd like to know how the board wants to handle that, if we're okay proceeding as it is or?
Y'all going to continue to handle it, Lynn? Okay. I can't imagine somebody letting a memorial garden go down, but y'all are responsible. So, that's fine with me. Do you think, Tom, do you want a written agreement?
No, but you said there is no agreement. Is that right, Lynn?
We, we can't find a record of one. That's not to say there was never one done, we just don't have a record of it.
Wouldn't it be prudent if we had one drawn up for, for both sides?
That's what the commissioners want.
I, I would love to have a maintenance agreement in place, but I don't think that that would prevent you from moving forward tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would ask that if you guys are going to give your permission, that it be conditioned on executing that maintenance agreement.
Say again?
That if you guys are going to give your approval tonight, that it be contingent on executing that maintenance agreement.
Okay.
Uh, next slide, please.
Kayla, before you go on or leave that slide, isn't that the way, uh, the east side of Assembly Drive?
Did I say west?
You said west.
I'm so sorry. Yes, it's east.
I got my compass out here to make sure.
Yes, oh my gosh. Yes, I'm so sorry.
I knew, I knew they hadn't moved.
Strike everything, every time I've said west in the last ten minutes, it's east. Assembly Drive, so sorry. Thank you, Kitty. Um, any other?
Actually, that's the south side.
Oh, my God.
Is it not, Lynn?
Well, north is, it's like southeast.
It's the right side going up.
Yes. When you're facing up, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, next slide, please. All right, so for the applicant to begin pursuing the proposed site work, they'll still have to get all their development permits through planning, which is me. The board has to give their permission to go ahead and conduct the work. And as I said before, if you guys want that maintenance agreement, I would make the permission contingent on obtaining that. So, that's all I've got. I don't know if y'all have questions about some of the site specifics. Lynn is here, she can answer some of, some more, provide some more details about what they're proposing.
Lynn, could you, on the new portion, there, there are a couple of one, two, three, and at the very end, it looks like little bump outs with maybe columns or something. Could you just describe what you all envision for those little bump outs?
Yes, sir, I'll be happy to. Those are four, five columns. They are similar, they will be stone columns about five feet tall. We will be able to place plaques on three sides of the columns, so that's why they're sort of bumped out with their own little area, just as a matter of interest. We have now sold all the niches in the garden, so there is no more space in the column barium wall itself, and we have significantly more scatterings already scheduled, planned, paid for than we have space on the existing column. So, scattering is the way of the future. It's practical, it's inexpensive, and it makes good sense for the environment as well as for the family, and so we want to be able to provide a, a better space in which to do that.
And one other item, you and I chatted yesterday, and I really love what you're doing with the surface. Would you just describe that a little bit?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, we did a significant amount of research into how we could make the path a hard enough surface that it would accommodate people who had wheelchairs or walkers, which it currently does not. It's pea gravel right now, it's about two or three inches thick, worn out in some other places. And those of us who serve on the Memorial Garden Committee work with each family who comes to have a service there, and over this last year, we've had to help families pick up wheelchairs, pick up people. That's not okay in a Montreat Memorial Garden. So, the new surface will be packed earth, four inches of stone, three inches of pea gravel, and then poured on top of that is a product that's made in Waynesville, North Carolina called clingstone, and it creates a hard surface that's completely water-permeable. There are four or five of those products in the country. Shipping them is extremely expensive, so we were delighted to find one that was made locally. So, it'll be, I think it'll, it's, it will be, the slight difference will be the path will now look like the bottom of the creek. It's sort of an amber-colored surface.
Sure.
For anyone interested in the technical details of the paving, they are in the materials in the staff report. Lynn did provide actual details of how that layering works.
And Lynn, do I recall you're saying that you're going to redo the existing path as well as the new path?
We are. We want the entire garden to both have a feeling of continuity as well as be accessible for all. And in keeping with our love of Montreat and its beauty and trees, we will be adding additional plantings on the roadside once the path is constructed, so that it provides a, a shield from, from the road.
Any other questions or comments?
Remind me again how long the green, the new path is? I think I read it.
However, it's, it doesn't give it.
Oh, I thought I saw it someplace. But it's, it's as long, if not longer than the one that's already there, right? It's not longer?
It looks about, it looks like it's a little shorter.
Well, that's okay. That's okay, I was just curious.
Any other questions or comments?
About a hundred feet.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to include contingent on a maintenance agreement being furnished to the town?
I move to permit, with the condition of having a maintenance agreement drawn up with the town, to permit the U, the Montreat Conference Center Memorial Garden Committee to upgrade and expand the existing pathway in the Montreat Memorial Garden.
I have a motion. Commissioner Alexander, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Fouchet. Any further questions and our discussions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nomination of a person to fill the position on the Board of Adjust, Board of Planning and Zoning Board.
Mr. Mayor, I move to nominate Daniel Hewitt to fill the planning and zoning alternate seat.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Fouchet. Daniel, upon completing work on the long-range, the comprehensive plan, Kayla always grins when I say it because she and I had a long time with that. But anyway, after he completed it, he came to me and said, you know, that was fun, I'd like something else to do. And so I turned his name over to Bill Shy, and Bill Shy said, we've got a position open on planning and zoning board as an alternate, and Daniel said he would do it. So, the nomination has been made, we've got a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Floor is open for public comment after this motion has carried. It's carried. Public comment, floor is open. Don't everybody jump up? Okay. Commissioners, communication, anyone?
Well, in, in just thinking about the, the use of that area, the green space that we have, I cannot think of a better way to use it. There's a lot of families that want to have their loved ones, there's either their ashes scattered or put wherever they can, and I know there's a lot of support for the column barium.
Any other commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, a couple things. If Mason was here, he would want to remind everybody of the community state legislative update on Thursday with Representative Ager. That will be Thursday, October nineteenth at four-thirty, right here in this room. There'll be refreshments at four-thirty, and the presentation by the representative starts at four-forty-five, and there will be Q and A afterward. The other item that I wanted to share with everyone is that bear hunting season begins on Monday, and it will continue on for about a month, then there'll be a few weeks where it's off again, and it will start back up again on December eleventh and run through January first. I just want to remind everyone that we did a lot of work last year, working very closely with the Bear Hunters Club, and we had no incidents. We had great cooperation, but nonetheless, we always need to be aware. So, be aware if you're hiking and walking, that there, there may be dogs, there may be sounds, there may be other things going on, and that we have a number of refrigerator magnets on what to do, and they are free, so you can take a couple if you need some wallpaper on your refrigerator, but they, they are available right here.
Anyone else? Okay. Grant, welcome aboard again. You can have something else change.
I was wondering if Kitty was gonna announce our craft at the, the craft sale.
Oh, yep, it's on the bottom of my list here.
Oh.
Made in Montreat, Saturday, the fourteenth, nine until?
Two-thirty.
Two-thirty, and more center products that our local folks have made and have for sale.
Do your Christmas shopping.
Yep. Dates to Remember, Planning and Zoning, regularly scheduled monthly meeting is Thursday, October the nineteenth, here in Town Hall, ten-thirty. Community State Legislative Update, Thursday, October the nineteenth, at four-thirty here in Town Hall. Tree Board, Tuesday, October the twenty-fourth, nine-thirty, Town Hall, Zoom is available. Board of Adjustment Meeting, tentatively, set up for Thursday, the twenty-sixth, at five P M. at Town Hall. Land Care, Wednesday, November the first, nine A M. Town Hall. November Board of Commissioners Meeting, Thursday, November the ninth, at seven P M. Public Forum starts at six-thirty. It's, Zoom options. Open Space Conservation Committee Meeting, Tuesday, November the fourteenth, three-thirty, Town Hall. Town Hall is closed for Thanksgiving. Y'all gonna take Thanksgiving off? No? Okay, on November the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, that's a Thursday and a Friday, they will be closed, and well deserved. Tree Board, Tuesday, November the twenty-eighth, nine-thirty in Town Hall with Zoom option. Planning and Zoning Commission, Thursday, October the nineteenth, ten-thirty, Town Hall, Zoom options available. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Angie, I'm sorry.
I left out the most important day in Montreat from the Dates to Remember.
Remember.
It's the second most important date in Montreat. October twenty-fourth at eight o'clock, guess what happens? Bulk pickup.
Ah, I thought I missed it.
Eight o'clock, put it out, Barry and the guys will pick it up. Mattresses are fifteen dollars, um, per mattress. Yeah, we went up.
Somebody else picks it up, it's free, right?
That's right. Good shopping day for Christmas. If you don't get it at Made in Montreat, you can get it on the curb.
Angie, you're a GM. Anybody have anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn, and I'm excited about the dredging of the lake, I really am. That's, that's a big plus for Montreat and for Black Mountain and the community. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Jane says we adjourn. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second.
Grant?
Grant seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, Grant, I didn't hear you.
Speak up, I seconded.
Have a second from Commissioner Dasher. All those in favor of the motion and second signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Sure.